Okay, we'll ask the, we'll call us to order and then I'll ask the clerk to establish the quorum of the board, please.
Mr. Blakemore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Present.
Thank you, all members present. We do have the agenda. The agenda can also be found online and there's agenda packets out there in the foyer. So is there any modifications or changes to the agenda tonight by the board? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda as prepared.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hart, any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is set. We do have the approval of our minutes from our December 28, 2023 meeting that was held here at seven o'clock. The clerk has prepared the minutes and those have been published online since last Friday. Any board member have any issues or corrections on the minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes as prepared by the clerk?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, the next item we have is our public comment. Is anyone here tonight that would like to come speak before the board? Yes, sir. Mr. Pope, please come up and state your name for the record, sir.
I'm Jim Pope. And Robert, I just want to respond to your answer last week when I asked you, can you tell us in a short, concise manner, what was the benefit that the county taxpayers, Walker County taxpayers, got from using the Gerard Law Firm over in Forsyth County? Now, you, it looked like you might give a good answer, but it might have been to the wrong question. Because you immediately got into saying that they are a specialist firm. I agree with that. I know that. And I know they're widespread. They've got a website advertising their service. And I don't have anything against that law firm. Now, when they came here that night, they came not because they bulldozed their way into the meeting, they came because the board invited them. So there's nothing wrong with what they did, and I don't have any malice against them whatsoever. But then you got into the comment, hey, we're living in a litigous, litigous environment.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with that. And I certainly don't want to get into any litigation, because it would be expensive for the county. And, but I'm not agreeing with y'all in coming, well, considering this point of getting a plant or a county manager in here. And because that could lead to litigation itself. And then you got into this point, hey, you're having to use your own car to go out and check on ditches, wear and tire on it, and other problems maybe.
Yes, sir.
But don't you get paid to do this kind of work?
We do, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The point I was making, Mr. Jim, is that I was getting the impression that, that we were not being good stewards of the tax dollar by hiring the Gerard Firm. And the point I was making is, yes, we get paid. However, we do not get paid any reimbursement for mileage, wear and tear on the vehicle, okay? That's the point I was making. I was making the point that we were good stewards of the tax dollar, because, you know, we've been discussing this since May of 2022. It's hard to believe, isn't it? May of 22. And so, you know, by you coming up, you know, I have sort of got the feeling that you thought we were maybe irresponsible in spending tax dollars. And I was basically disagreeing with you from the standpoint of, I feel like we've been good stewards of the tax dollars, not just dollars and cents for us as far as not taking reimbursement, but good steward of the tax dollar overall, because you mentioned $1,600 for the Gerard Firm.
Yeah.
Okay? So, so that was what I was just trying to point out to you.
But, but I just didn't feel like you addressed that question straightforward.
Yes, sir.
About that $1,600.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, okay. But I'm not going to ask you that question anymore. I don't think you'd answer it in a straightforward manner. But I do, do have a similar question I want to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, let me, let me just make one comment, Mr. Jim. You know, so going back to May of 2022, so, so we're coming up on about 20 months we've been discussing this.
Yeah.
And I've discussed it with you, Commissioner Blakemore's discussed it with you, Commissioner Askew's discussed it with you, over and over and over and over again. And I certainly don't mind responding to your questions, but I'm not sure I can give you any more information or a different answer or better answer than I've given you previously. Now, we can continue this throughout 2024 if you'd like, but I'm pretty much going to tell you the same thing that I've previously told you.
Okay. Well, that was a question I was wanting answered, and I don't think you answered it straightforward. My time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, who would like to be next? Yes, sir.
Stanley Matthews, Chickamauga. I want to thank Mr. Pope. I've watched him for many meetings, and he's inspired me to come down with my questions, because I, I know most of y'all. And I think the American way is, you're our government, we should show up and ask questions. At the same time, my son, Liam, is being homeschooled, and we're in the Constitution part, and we've referenced the Enabling Act several times over the past, I think Robert mentioned, since 2022? I think that's right, Mr. Pope, that you've mentioned it. And I just had a couple of questions about the Enabling Act and as far as chairman, in your authority, whenever, in section 10 of it, it talks about the chairperson shall be authorized in his or her sole discretion to spend not more than $25,000 without approval of the board. And it, it seems to me, talking with the folks that had the input into this document, that it means exactly what it says, because I've asked it every way you could ask it. And I know we all got opinions and we can assume things, and we all know what that gets us. Whenever a job is created by you with no job posting and no job description and nothing is done, and the salary is 42 or 52 or whatever, above $25,000, where does it give you this authority to do this in this document? Because not only does it limit you there on your spending as far as $25,000, but you go over to section 16, and there's, it clearly states, there's no expenditures of county funds that made in exception in accordance with the county budget or amendments thereto adopted by the board. The chairperson of the board shall enforce compliance with this section by all departments of county government, and to this end shall institute a system of allotments of all monies appropriated and budgeted. And I believe that you've created a couple of jobs on your own that makes no sense to me.
Which jobs would those be that were not posted?
The executive administrative assistant, I believe, before Thanksgiving?
Yeah, that job was posted.
It was, with the job description?
It's been posted since July of '23.
You got an executive?
It was listed as an administrative assistant, but based off of the credentials and the education that that person had, then the board executive was put in front of that.
So people that worked within the county had the opportunity to apply for that job?
Yeah, there was probably 40 or 50 resumes that were sent in, so they're all in the database if you'd like a copy of them.
I'm not interested in the resumes, I'm counting on you to do the job appropriately.
Yeah, so yeah, those were, the job was posted.
Under executive administrative assistant.
It was listed as, for the commissioner's office, for administrative assistant.
And the board's aware of that?
Yeah, I mean, the job was posted.
Okay.
And it was a previous, you know, previous position, because the person that had been doing that job got another promotion within the office.
Sure. And, and so that job was appropriated for in the budget process?
That is correct.
Okay, and so then you had a maintenance supervisor about a year ago or 18 months ago?
Mm-hmm.
And that job was posted also?
It was.
And we created a department for that?
A department?
Didn't we create a department for him to head?
No, the department already existed.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, we've got 81 buildings, so that department's existed for a long time.
Okay.
Long before I got here.
All right, and so I did, but, so you do have the authority to spend that money above $25,000?
If it's, if it's personnel, it's in the budget, and those positions are, are posted, then you've got to be able to pay them.
I understand that. But do you have the authority to spend more than $25,000? And if, I'm, I'm wanting to know if, if you do have the authority above $25,000, where and here does it give you that authority?
What we bring for approval is all out of the ordinary or capital purchases. So as an example, what we don't bring before the board, which we can if the board wants us to change this, the, the food that we spend every month for the inmates is $25,000, $30,000, $35,000 a month. That's a reoccurring charge every month based off the number of inmates that's at the jail that they're spending on food.
Is that listed under the sheriff's budget?
It is under the sheriff's budget.
So that's appropriated with the budget process?
It is.
That's not something you do on your own as chairman?
It's, it's appropriated in the budget. So that purchase, well, they tee it in as a purchase order.
But that's not, but that's not under your discretion?
But we don't bring those reoccurring costs every single month. Otherwise, you could say that every month we need to come in and approve every employee's paycheck.
And, and I, well, that's a stretch. I, I'm sorry.
That's what you're referring to.
No, what I'm referring to is you creating a job and not posting it and spending $42,000 in salary, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not talking, I don't want to confuse anyone. I'm not talking about recurring expenses. I'm talking about abuse of power. That's what I'm talking about.
Every job's been posted. Because before I came in office, there was no posting of any job, period. No jobs were posted.
Okay.
So I created that to make sure that job descriptions and jobs are posted, put on the website, we also put them in other third-party websites. Every job gets posted.
And how many people were interviewed for this job?
Uh, there was only one person interviewed, because there was only one person that was qualified, be happy to share those resumes with you.
I'm not interested in the resumes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Time is up.
Thank you for your answers.
Sure, happy to. Good to see you again. It's been a few months.
Got a comment. Comment on this before we go any further. I, I was just looking at what we were, we're canning there, and I, I want a little clarification as well, just because I'm very familiar with Enabling Act. I keep one with me at all times, and I've had it before, before we ever convened our first meeting. And, and it, it's, it's very clear that, that your spending limit is $25,000, and we've talked about this before, but it's a good time to re, kind of re, just kind of revisit this. So, and I want to understand this completely. So it, right here, it does, and it states very clearly what your spending limit is. So what makes you think that you can go and hire someone over $25,000 without talking to the board about it? Because it clearly states, and we've talked about this before, that that's, it is about, it's, it's kind of outside the box, and we'd like to be involved in that.
I, I.
And when you don't, it just creates confusion and, and things just like we're dealing with right now.
And I thought from our conversation, you'd always, also we talked to Ken Gerard about that, and he said that that was under personnel and day-to-day, and that was part of the employee process.
It, it, it.
Isn't that what he said?
It's, it's not exactly what he's, it's just not verbatim.
That's why I was trying to remember from our conversation.
I don't want to speak verbatim, but we did, we talked about that. And, and I think that the, the answer, and I, and I'd be more than happy to get back and get a, get us a documented answer for the next meeting. But it's, the governing authority of the, the county now, since we went from the sole commissioner to a board, is the board of commissioners, period.
That's right.
Period. So if there is any question, and if we, and if, if we have any problems, if we need to adjust it, we can. I just want, like I said, we had had that conversation about, and I think it would alleviate some of these issues like this if there were more conversation on the front end, than we're talking about hiring personnel or creating positions. Or, like you said, there was a verbiage, a little verbiage issue. We had advertised as administrative assistant, and then because of credentials or whatever you chose to call it executive, well, that's, I, I don't think that's, you see, I, I think that's kind of getting a little bit out of that box, just to be honest. I think that would be, we're going to make, we're going to create jobs and name positions, that's a board function. We'll decide whether it's an executive or an administrative. That's not, that's not a day-to-day affair. That's a creating a job that's a board function.
So the title did change, but you will find the job description is still the same.
Okay.
Same job description, same role, same functions, doing the same.
Just the title changed.
Doing the same duties.
Just the title.
Just the title changed.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Good.
Anybody else like to come up?
I do have a question.
Yeah, please come up, so they can hear you at home, and you got to be on the record. Please state your name.
Angela. Um, actually, I had nothing prepared today, surprisingly, but I am curious, were y'all aware of the hires when they happened, or was there?
No, we find out generally. When he makes a hire, somebody in county government will call us and say, hey, did you know he hired someone? We didn't have no idea.
Oh, so you didn't, you didn't?
But, but I think what Stanley was speaking to is, if he narrows it down to a person, then that person should come to the board for a vote for hire, and then there wouldn't be a reoccurring vote every time there's a paycheck, correct, Stanley?
Yes, the, the reoccurring expenses have nothing to do, that's a complete distraction from what I was asking. I'm concerned about his spending limit of $25,000 in any shape or form, and I don't care if it's for jobs, I don't care for, I don't care what it's for. The paper, and if we as taxpayers and citizens, if, if we wouldn't, if we don't enforce this document now, my son, which is 10 years old, won't recognize this document. That's what's wrong with the Constitution of this country today. And it plainly says that you can make no decision, and you can, and you can, can you ever have you more as reoccurring expenses and, and as you did in the paychecks? It's not involving paychecks. It's the position that was created in the interview process that, that you put in place. And it's, I, I don't, I don't know the person, I have nothing against the, the person, I have no idea who they are. The process is $25,000 in this document, and I would hope, my hope is, is that the board and you as our CEO, that we look to believe us, would enforce this document as the county enforces the code book on its citizens. And if we're not going to be as strict about this Enabling Act as we are our code book, then we might as well just throw everything in the wind. It's, it's unfair and to try to, to take off in all these other directions. It's very clear to me, by reading this document without reading anything into it, that you cannot spend more than $25,000 on anything.
Okay, let me, let me interrupt you here with respect, because you're getting repetitive. Technically, she does have the floor, that's why I've stopped the clock, because it was burning, he was burning your time. And I allowed him to do that, so that's why I stopped the clock.
Yeah.
So I'm going to start the clock back. Before I do that, I want to answer a question, so you gain a little of your time back. I don't do all the hiring.
Okay.
Just like Blake Hodge back there as a fire chief, he does all of his hiring.
Yeah.
So if we need to come in here with everybody he hires for the board to approve, that's something we can talk about.
Right.
I don't hire the people at the 911 office.
Right.
I don't hire the people at the landfill.
Right.
There's a lot of these departments that I don't hire. But people that weren't in certain positions, I do hire. Bobby made a hire the other day, called me up and said, hey, I want to hire this person. Yeah, I filled out the, the offer letter and signed it, but I have yet to meet that person.
Right.
So a large majority of the hiring that takes place, I don't personally do.
Right.
Because we've got good department leaders that have been managers a long time, that knows what they're doing, and they do their hiring. And so that way it doesn't bottleneck things.
Right.
But I'll let you proceed, you're back on the clock.
Um, another question I have from that, though, is if, say that is the case, and y'all disagree, then what, I mean, then, then what would, what happens? I mean, I'm assuming y'all did agree with the hires, even though it was after the fact? Or, or no? I mean, did y'all, were, were y'all okay with the decision of the jobs that were made, and then who was on them, or who was hired for them, or that, no, after the fact? Or would it have mattered, I think?
Well, I think, I think there's been some disagreement, but, and not, and, and like Stanley said, it's nothing, we don't, we don't know the people.
Right.
Per se. But just that it's done, and then we find out after the fact from somebody else.
Right, right, okay. That's what I was.
And they can speak for themselves, but that's.
I mean, let me, let me just make a comment.
Yeah.
I, I do not know the person who's hired. I have not seen her CV or resume. Um, I understand that she's doing a good job.
Right.
Would I have liked to have been privy to, um, her training, her background prior to, um, just as a courtesy? Sure.
Right.
But from what I understand, she's doing a very good job, which, that's great, you know. I think it kind of boils down to communication is key in pretty much every decision-making process.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that, that would be helpful moving forward. But again, I, I don't have any disagreement or qualms about the person who's hired.
That's, I, I was just, I didn't know the process, I, so I was, I was just curious how that works.
That's a good question.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to, I want to comment to that, Commissioner Stoltz, you said, you said to this, to this day, you've not met this person?
I have not.
I think that's the gist of the problem right there. I think that, I think that specific statement, you're on the, you're a voting member of a five-member board, just as you are, I am, you are, and you are. And if we're going to be making those types of, making hires that are, that are in our, in our office, or that have to do with administrative, then yes, the board does need to be aware, and we need to be, we need to know when and how, and, and what the process is. And that's a communication thing that we've talked about. And I'm not on the clock, I'm, I'm not on the clock. So, I don't, and Angela, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take your time, I was just responding. But, but no, I think that, that, that's a key point, is it wouldn't, we wouldn't be having to discuss it if we talked about it on the front end. And, and that's something that we're going to need to be really looking at doing in the future, because, because it is very clear in the Enabling Act, just to make clear, the board can't open, close, and combine any department. So if we're not comfortable with something to do, there are ways to, to correct it, but we don't need to be playing tit for tat, we need to be working up front, face to face, and talking about it on the front end.
Yeah, as we have.
Oh, wait a minute.
I mean, we have.
Wait a minute.
We'll meet you while I go.
You had to throw that comment in, I'd, I'd let it go.
And we do talk a lot.
We do talk a lot, but we did not talk about the hires that have been mentioned tonight, so let's, don't confuse things, okay?
Sure.
Are we clear on that? We did not talk about these hires that we've talked about tonight, before they were.
And just, so everybody.
I want an answer.
No, we did not.
Okay, okay, that's all I wanted to do, just answer the question.
But listen, for those of you that are here tonight, Commissioner Stoltz, Gabriella, who was hired, she is here with us tonight, Rachel Gabriella.
Come up front, Gabriella, and introduce yourself, please, ma'am.
I'll stand over here.
No, please, please come up to the.
Come to the podium, everybody.
Just introduce yourself and, and tell them where you originate from, and a little bit about your education, your background.
My name's Gabriella, I have my MBA degree, and I decided to move to Rock Spring, and I was going to stay local, I had the opportunity to go to DC, but I decided to stay here. And so I'm excited to be here, I've loved the job so far, and I would love to have a sit-down with each one of you to get to know you a little better. So it's nice to meet you.
Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Gabriella.
Very good. Very good. Okay, anyone else, before we can move forward?
I'm, I'm sorry, I need to belabor the, the topic, but I've.
Please state your name.
Angie Teens, HR Director. Just coming from the HR perspective, I just want to caution the chairman about hiring, interviewing one person, especially on your comment that the job description did not change, but the title did. So the other people, the other 40 or 50 applicants, might have had similar qualifications, and you did not interview them. So just caution you against that, it's not for comment.
Yeah, and to respond to that, the only person, and you have access to the documents, the only person that had an MBA degree was the one that I hired.
And that job did not require that. Thank you.
But it's an extra value.
Didn't require those.
Didn't require.
Was HR involved in any of this?
No, sir, I was not involved.
Not at all?
No, sir, I, I found out when y'all did. Thank you.
And are you involved in all the hires?
That is, you're right, I'm not.
You're not, that's true.
No, HR is not involved in all the hires.
That's true, because a lot of departments do their hiring, correct?
Uh, you allow that, yes, that's true, yes.
And who does the orientation for the new hires?
I do the new hiring orientation.
Okay, so HR should be, is involved and should be involved in, in the process.
That is normal practice in any organization, yes.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll go to our next new business under resolutions. We have some annual housekeeping that we do every year. Resolution R-001-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to elect a vice chairperson from its members. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and is set forth by Act Number 165, the act passed by the Georgia General Assembly during the 2017, 2018 session, subsequently approved by the governor. And whereas Part 1, Section 8 of the act states that at the first meeting of each year, the board shall elect from its members a vice chairperson. In the event the death, disqualification, or resignation of a chairperson, the vice chairperson shall perform the duties and exercise the authority of the chairperson until a new chairperson is chosen as provided in the act. And whereas the act further states, the vice chairperson shall preside at meetings of the board in the absence of the chairperson, and shall serve for a calendar year in which he or she is elected. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that blank, so we'll insert a name, is elected from its members to serve as the vice chair for the remaining of the calendar year, so resolved, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of January 2024. So this is an action item of the board to elect a vice chair, so what's your, what's the pleasure of the board?
As chairman, as the outgoing vice chair, I have had the opportunity to talk to each district commissioner and kind of assess their desire to be vice chair, their ability to do the vice chair position, because it does increase the workload a little bit, not a tremendous amount, but a little bit. And after speaking to each of our district commissioners and getting an understanding of, of what their desire and ability would be, I would like to go ahead and, and make a motion to appoint District 2 Commissioner Mark Askew as our vice chair for 2024.
Okay, so we have a nomination by Commissioner Stoltz to appoint District 2 Commissioner Mark Askew. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Well, it says we have a second by Commissioner Blakemore, is there any further discussion? No further discussion? So we have a motion to approve Commissioner Askew as vice chair, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Commissioner Askew, be the vice chair.
Thank you for the confidence that you guys put in, and I appreciate the opportunity to say once again that Chairman Whitfield is vice chair, and so thank y'all for your confidence, appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Next item we have is Resolution R-002-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to establish a regular meeting calendar for 2024. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, is set forth by Act number one sixty-five, act passed by the Georgia General Assembly during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen session, and subsequently approved by the governor. And whereas Part One, Section Nine of the act states, the Board of Commissioners shall hold a minimum of two regular meetings each month at the county seat. And whereas the act further states, the board, at its first meeting of the year, shall determine the time, the date, the place of its regular meetings. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that regular meetings will be held at, and we'll fill in the blank for the time, on, and we'll fill in the date of each month, and at blank the location for the remainder of the calendar year. So resolved and adopted the eleventh day, uh, January two thousand twenty-four. So we will set the time, date, and location of these meetings to be held. What's the pleasure of the board?
Um, you know, I go to bed early. You do go to bed early, and I go to bed right behind you. I, I, it's worked pretty well for everybody, I think. Or is it, is it conflicting with anyone, or do we need to kind of look at something different, or what do you think, guys?
Well, we've had six before, and then we changed it to seven. Uh, so I guess there are two options. I, I prefer six, but I can get off earlier. I don't know what.
I know, I know we did push it back because I never knew when I was going to get off, but I do get off at four thirty every day now, so.
How about six thirty? Well, I mean, and, and the only reason, and of course, you, you farm, well, I do a lot of hay, too. And when you, that's six o'clock, sometimes you need that, and that's all, you know, I mean, we're just kind of, but I, I don't care. I mean, we can do, it's up to y'all. I, I, I'm good. I can be here whenever time you want me to. Um, you know, it just seems like it works fairly well with people, with us work that have jobs. Now, you're retired, Brian, but some of us that do work, I don't know as far as get, no, I'm tickled about that. But no, what I'm saying is that sometimes, like, if I'm on my job in trial, I may not leave there till five. They push it to get here at six.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, I'm willing to work with you.
Whatever works for you guys, yeah.
Because you stay up a little bit later.
I think six thirty is good with everybody else's family.
Okay, would you like to make that in form of a motion?
Motion for six thirty PM, second and fourth Thursday of each month.
Here?
Here.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is six thirty PM, the second and fourth Thursday of the month, which is our current schedule as well, for those watching at home, in the same location to hear an X three. So that is the motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The time and date and location is set. Okay, the next housekeeping item that we have been in election years, Resolution R dash zero zero three dash twenty-four, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to set the qualifying fee for the two thousand twenty-four primary and general election. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, is set forth by the Act number one sixty-five, act passed by the Georgia General Assembly during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen session, and subsequently approved by the governor. And whereas pursuant to OCGA twenty-one dash two dash one thirty-one A one A, the governing authority is required to fix and publish the qualifying fee for each county office to be filled in two thousand twenty-four general primary and general election. Whereas, except as otherwise provided in OCGA twenty-one dash two, one thirty-one A one B, such fees shall be three percent of the minimum salary of the county offices. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the qualifying fee for the following county offices for the two thousand twenty-four primary and general elections shall be as follows: State Court Judge, five thousand ten dollars even; Chair of the Board of Commissioners, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents; the sheriff is two thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and forty cents; Solicitor General, two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars even; Chief Magistrate, two thousand three hundred and five dollars and two cents; Judge of the Probate Court, two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents; Clerk of Superior Court, two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents; Tax Commissioner also is two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents; the coroner is nine hundred and seventy-two dollars even; District Members of the Board of Commissioners is three hundred and sixty dollars even; District Members of the Board of Education is forty-two dollars even; the surveyor is seventy-seven dollars even; so resolved and adopted the eleventh day of July two thousand twenty-four.
January.
Yeah, excuse me, January two thousand twenty-four. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution to set these qualifying fees?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The qualifying fees have been set as required. Okay, the next that we have is a, is a memorandum of understanding. I, I'm not going to read all this, but I'll give, give everybody an overview unless y'all, you know, want me to read this as a board. But back, uh, several meetings back, maybe three or four meetings back, Superior Court Judge Chris Art come and spoke to us about the, the pay. We talked about the census data and the monthly supplements and all. So they do get their state salary, but the supplements, um, needed to be reset based off the two thousand twenty census to clear up what he was concerned about. So, uh, our attorney, David Gottlieb, has been working with, uh, Judge Don Thompson, and he's been facilitating with, uh, Dade County, Chautauqua County, Catoosa County, and also with all of the other judges. And everyone has, uh, has come to this agreement and this document and feel good about it. Actually got Dade County's executed copy today. Um, my understanding is Chautauqua County's already approved it, and, uh, all the judges are good with it, but they still get the same amount total as a local supplement of sixteen thousand dollars a year. This just real allocates that. And so this will lower what Dade County, Chautauqua County, Walker County are paying. And based off of four judges, this will save, uh, Walker County round numbers, and I sent y'all an email on this, round numbers is about three thousand dollars a year or over a ten-year census cycle. That's over, it'd be over thirty thousand dollars over a ten-year time period. So this is an agreement to enter in, uh, for all four counties. And, uh, then, uh, Catoosa County will continue to be their, um, legal agent, but each, uh, county sends those checks directly to each, um, each of those judges. So any questions, concerns, or additional explanation? Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, uh, to, to set the, um, the salary supplements for the state court judges?
I should jump around.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. And this goes into effect, uh, this month, so all counties agree to, to those new rates to start the calendar. Okay, very good. All right, and then with us tonight, we have Mr. Jad Johnson as our public defender. Would you like to, to come up? I think he was wanting to speak in, to our annual agreement with, uh, your office being the public defenders. And again, this is with all four counties as well, so I'll let you head the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, on behalf of my office, I just wanted to thank the commission for continuing to support our office. Um, we routinely get everything that we ask for and everything that we need. And so we're very appreciative of, uh, the Walker County Commission, as well as our other counties. Um, today, uh, I've got for the board's consideration our annual contract. Uh, this is the same contract that's been, uh, signed by all the counties, uh, for the past almost twenty years now. We're entering into our nineteenth year, uh, serving Walker County and, uh, Catoosa, Chautauqua, and Dade Counties. This contract is not any different than last year's, um, except for the year. Uh, but everything else in it is, uh, exactly the same as it has been for the past several years, so there's no change. Uh, but this is just the agreement between Walker County and the other counties in the state of Georgia, uh, to provide, from my office, to provide the indigent services to the court system.
If anyone had any questions for Mr. Jad?
I have one question. I'm just curious. How does your office go about determining someone's status as being indigent? I just, I kind of always wondered that.
Sure. So, uh, the, uh, statute, uh, sets forth the qualifications. Um, and the, we're, we're awaiting this year's, um, federal registry, uh, in, indigency poverty guideline. Uh, that hasn't been set forth for two thousand twenty-four yet. So we're still working on our two thousand twenty-three numbers, but we take those federal poverty guidelines. And depending on if you're charged with a felony, a misdemeanor, or juvenile court, um, it's a certain percentage. Uh, and so we get those numbers, and those are the numbers that we use when we interview someone to determine if they're eligibility for a public defender.
And so an individual who's involved in a civil case would not qualify for public defender services. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only services that we provide are in the Superior Court of the counties. Uh, so that would not include state court, for example, or magistrate court, or probate court. Uh, we also provide services in the juvenile court for delinquencies only, not dependency cases. Um, and when I say in the Superior Court, I should have clarified that in the criminal division only. Uh, so if somebody needs an attorney for a divorce, we don't handle that in any way. Um, so we only handle criminal business in Superior Court, uh, delinquencies in juvenile court.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anytime.
Good summary. Good summary. Any other questions for Mr. Jad? Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the annual contract for the public defense office?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blakemore. Uh, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, our December statistical data report, and, uh, this gives a, a good snapshot being at the end of December, because then all gears, uh, that you see to the right of the column are all totals. So everything, you know, is, is in equal proportion there. And so you can see the amount of, uh, activity at our animal shelter. And also you can see, we have got our roadside trash crew running again. So we appreciate Bobby putting that team together, and you can see that started the last couple of days of November and, uh, got them going in December. So you'll start to see those numbers come up in two thousand twenty-four on the trash pickup. Uh, you'll see that, um, our, our, um, total night books, there's even people coming and staying with us at Mountain Cove Farms in December. There was thirty-seven nights stayed. Give us a total of, uh, seven hundred and eighty-nine nights for the year. Our new home construction, we had fifteen permits pulled in December, thirteen in November. So that got us, uh, three hundred and fifty-two single-family home permits pulled for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, three hundred and fifty-two permits was the, the most that we have record of all, which we have record all the way back to two thousand fourteen in the office. And so, uh, three hundred and fifty-two is, if you add twenty, year two thousand twenty-two and year two thousand twenty-one together, it was only two hundred and ninety-nine adding those two years together. So three fifty-two was a, was a big year over the last several years. Uh, you'll see that, uh, we still have a lot of activity on our website, but through the holidays, it was down some with, uh, thirty-six thousand hits, but we still had over five hundred and twenty-six thousand views to our website in a year. Uh, we still continue when the weather permits. We got to get a certain temperature, plus the asphalt plants have to be producing asphalt. But we did patch forty potholes, and our tally construction was able to even get some, some paving done right first year to finish up on our paving projects. And transit trips at eighteen hundred and fifty-seven, and so they had a big year. If you look over the last five years, transit, uh, did over thirty thousand, where they did thirty thousand four hundred and fifty-six strips in two thousand twenty-three, where in two thousand twenty-two, they did just shy of twenty-eight thousand. So we still continue to have, uh, a great need for our transit system, and they do a great job in that department. There's some other data on there that you can take a look at as well. So that's our statistical data. So now on our agenda is our commissioner comments, and we'll start with District One.
Just appreciate all of our employees and the hard work they give our county and our citizens. Thank everyone for coming out and being involved. If I can help, call, text, or email. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Askew, you're done.
Oh, no.
Commissioner comments.
Oh, my goodness.
That's fast.
No, uh, yeah, I was, my mind was wandering. Um, uh, first of all, thanks to all of our employees and thanks to the, the citizens who do come out and participate and help us to, to make some decisions and help us give you your input. Um, I do want to, uh, talk about the, uh, uh, get Chief Hodge to talk about this. Midland Radio, that you were, I think, you were on the, um, email that, from Carol Cross talking about the community center and trying to pull some stuff together. Chief Hodge, would you, would you give us kind of a rundown of what you pulled together on that, please, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Ms. uh, Cross sent us an email reaching out, uh, trying to get a, uh, weather radio campaign to, for the community members, uh, in the Cedar Grove community, uh, which I think is a great idea. It's been done in the past. Other counties have, have done it. Um, so we, we met, uh, and discussed kind of what that looks like. They have a, a wild game dinner the first Saturday in February that they do at the, at the community center, which we thought would be really good, because they have somewhere around two hundred people that attend that, that dinner. So that's a good, that's a good title. It's kind of short notice, but we're working out the, trying to get that done. Uh, we got a price from Midland on the, uh, weather radios, and if you, it was two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, I believe.
Just for a hundred.
For one hundred. If you, if you buy it one hundred, then you get the, uh, you get a, you don't have to pay for shipping, which is three dollars per unit, and, uh, batteries are included at that point. So it's a, it's pretty good. They, they do give the, the government discount to us, the, you know, they're normally like thirty-six dollars if you buy them online, so it's a, it's a pretty good, twenty-six dollars apiece, pretty good deal. Um, so, um, I would like for this to be the beginning of, uh, because we got one community that'll do it, and there'll be other, and there'll be other community members from outside that community that attend that, that dinner. So, um, it'll, it'll hopefully spark a little interest in that. And we're also going to promote, again, do another push with our Siren GPS, uh, notification system that we have. We'd like to see that number increase, uh, with the participants, so.
So what you're thinking is if, if we started out with a hundred units at twenty-six hundred dollars, then we can see what, and, and kind of get ready for this, this community, this, this meeting, and see what the involvement is. See how many are interested. Maybe fifty. There may be a hundred and fifty, but we don't know.
Right. We have a, we have a performance grant from Emergency Management, the state of Georgia, gives us every year, and it comes available. There, it's been cut in the last couple of years, and we've got an email saying it was probably going to be reduced again. We were, we were around twenty-two thousand that we'd get each year. Um, uh, the money's, we're, we're finishing up spending the money for, uh, twenty-three, but the twenty-four starts in January. So moving forward after this, we could, we can use grant money to, uh, support that, this campaign.
And one other question, too. I just want to understand this. Uh, now these, um, I just remember back when we went to the eight hundred system, but these, these are, they, so if your TV's not working, is your radio working, I guess, is what I'm saying? Are they, what frequency, how does this?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, Curtis can answer this better than me, but it's, it's, I'm going to, I'm going to use, it's, it's got a programming that we program it. So it, it obviously will plug in, battery backup.
So, but if the power's off and none of them still can get the alert?
So, so with Siren GPS, you, you have, you have three notifications. You can, you can have it to your landline. You can have it to your cell phone, email, text message. Something goes down with the tower, something, the weather radio is still going to, is still going to alert and go off. So it's a redundancy. Uh, and then not everybody has smartphones, so.
Right. Well, that was, my thought is that for the people that would be interested, you know, a lot of people have smartphones and, and are connected pretty well, but there's a lot of the population that's not. So if we're going to do, look at something like that, I just want to make sure that, that in areas where we don't have good cell service, these are still going to work.
They, they should. I mean, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's, yeah, I'm sure there's.
I think it's a great idea. I, I answered Carol back and told her, I thought, you know, I see it happening in a lot of other communities around us and stuff, and seems like they get a pretty good response, and.
Yeah, well, thank them, because it takes, you know, community involvement to get, to get this done, to get this, get it promoted, and get it out there, and make it a success.
So I have a realistic handheld weather radio, but you can change the band on it. So in other words, I can pick, I can pick up alerts out of Peachtree City on the National Weather Service.
Or Marstown?
Or Marstown, Tennessee. Will these work the same way?
Yes, they have multiple program settings in the, in the weather. To my understanding, from what I've read of the specifications on the units, you can, you can program them to have, uh, basically redundancy or, or.
Those are different knives. I mean, that's, that's way good.
Do we have twenty-six hundred dollars at the ARPA? Can we find that out of our ARPA funding, or do we?
We'll have to find it out of another account, because the, the ARPA, we submitted that on for capital, but we'll, we'll find, I mean, we'll find.
So we can make this happen, so we can get them ordered, because you are on a short timeframe. I do believe, if you guys are all, if you agree to think it's a good idea, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, Midland, uh, advised that it would. Yeah, Midland advised that it would, once we submitted a purchase order, that we'd have them in three or four days, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, because means they're going to be the second, right?
Yes, sir.
Couple of weeks.
Whatever the first Saturday is.
Means the second.
Do we, do we need a motion or anything on that, or we just going to take care of it?
No.
We'll take care of it. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Hart?
I would like to thank, and you know, we've been working for a couple, two and a half years to get some roads paved in the back roads of Villanow, near Ricky Austin's house, and people have been patient there, but Tate Road, Ben Childs Road, Concord Road been paved, new water lines in, so thanks to the water department for that. But not quite finished. I talked to Carl this week, they got the binder down, and maybe the topic on next spring, but just many thanks for the folks involved with that. And the T-Splosh dollars, too, I would think the last bit of the T-Splosh dollars from the last T-Splosh, correct? So, yeah, it's good, it's good to see that happen.
Thank you, as we got it coming back around.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And thanks, Chief Hodge, he's been working, we had a fire over in the Villanow area, right on the county line, that kind of reopened the door for an intergovernmental agreement with Chautauqua County, chief's working on that, so I think it's important we get that done. You know, we talked about it earlier, but we kind of forgot about it, slipped our mind, but when that fire happened, it kind of opened some eyes up, so thanks for working on that, Chief, Robert.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Thank you to all of our employees, you do a wonderful job, and we're going to have some cold temps coming up soon, I know you're going to be working out in the cold, so certainly appreciate your dedication and your hard work. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to yield some of my time under comments to Chief Hodge. I did want to have a couple of questions about Hinkle Fire Station, Chief, if you don't So basically, this week, I had some questions, a few emails from some citizens that live in the area. Just kind of want an update on where we're at as far as volunteer staffing at that station, and kind of where we're at as far as moving forward with the, what your knowledge is of the completion of the building.
So we currently don't have volunteer staffing there at that location, but we've got the equipment in the building, and of course, it's been that way prior, I don't remember what year that, that was, it was before me when it was constructed, and then we've been working on trying to get that, it was put in the splosh for, to finish it. And then I'll have to ask Chairman Whitfield to tell us where we are on, on the status of it, because it's, the architects, to my understanding, is ready to go.
Let me ask you this, as, as far as staffing, are we looking at replacing some of those volunteers, maybe that are no longer there, or kind of what's the?
Yeah, so there's, so, so we look at, obviously, we look at, as big a counties, we have 18 fire stations in those districts, 456 square miles, hard to cover. We don't have any staffing across the top of the mountain. The Macklemore is starting their own fire department to cover that, their property. So they're, they're, they've hired a full-time chief, and then they, they're trying to do some volunteers, so they'll be, we'll have an automatic aid agreement with Macklemore, so there'll be a little bit of help on the mountain. And then, of course, we've got automatic aid with Wes Brown and New Salem. But staffing here is difficult, obviously, because we have to look at areas where the call volumes are, so we can, they run, that station runs approximately 60, 60-something calls a year. And then we've got, we've got stations that are running several hundred that are not staffed either. So it, it, it's twofold. It's, it's looking at geographical responses that help cover multiple areas, plus, you know, call volume. So it's, it's the, I would like, I'd love to say, yes, we're going to staff, staff something up there, but I think it's going to be a little, it's going to be a little bit of funding and, and.
Yes, sir.
And where we are, so.
So currently, we keep a pumper up there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So once that building is, the build-out is completed and everything, will any additional apparatus?
Pumper and rescue assigned to that.
Okay. So currently, there is a pumper and a rescue?
Yes, as long as they're in service, as long as that's, they're assigned there, and then sometimes there'll be maintenance issues where if we, one has to go to the shop or something, then one or the other will be gone.
Okay. So that will stay the same even once the build-out is completed?
Yes, because we're, I mean, we're hoping to get more volunteers or.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, could you kind of get us an update? I know these, these folks on Hinkle are pretty, you know, they're pretty excited about wanting to get this completed and.
Yeah, so Chief Hodge mentioned there was funding in the splosh, $300,000, and then so he, myself, and Nathan Farrow met and looked at, because the original building plans for that was just a fire station only, and there was no community space. And so the way the roof is pitched and the heights of the ceilings, there's a real nice opportunity to have a second story put into that building. So Chief Hodge reached out to the architect over in Ringo that did the original design, and has him working on modifying that original design, so we would use the first floor as a community center where people could hold baby showers, birthday parties, those type of events, and have a space, because we don't have anything else on that side of the mountain, on that end at all, for somebody to even have anything. And then use the upstairs part for the, the fire housing, if you ever had any personnel stay there, if we ever needed it for a disaster shelter, then you would have actually both. But the way the current plans are, to have a community vent there, you'd have to pull the fire trucks outside and use the base space. And I just, that just doesn't feel right when you've got a, you know, a building that nice there in the community, and you've got to pull the trucks out to have space for that. So have you spoken with the architect of where he is on the process?
Yes, sir. He, he's waiting on, he, he said he couldn't move forward without, because you had advised him to talk to him.
Okay, well, I, I'll have to follow back up with him, because I thought he was just still working on it, because you, you and Farrow had met with him, so that's what I wasn't sure about.
So we, we allocated the funding for the, those drawings for, was it Rob Sandru's?
Yes, sir.
What, six months ago?
It's not longer.
And so he's been sitting, waiting, so we've not, so actually, as of today, there's no drawings even started? Is that, do you understand?
No, because there's a contract he requires that we've, we've gone over.
Yeah, because we had some back and forth because of the detail of the contract, of exactly what his scope of work was.
But he finalized that, and then after the, whenever, I can't remember when the meeting was, but it's been months ago, but I'd reached back out to him, and then he, that's when he told me that, and I'd.
Well, you and I could get on a conference call with him tomorrow and see, see what he needs from us.
Yeah, we need to, we definitely want to move that forward, because like you said, if it's not start, if he's waiting on a phone call, we need to get him a phone call. I don't know why he would be, but if that's the case, but please give us an update on that next week, because I've had several residents in, from District 2 and others from the map as well, just concerned and wondering, because it's taken, you know, a little while, so. I knew we had money allocated for it, so, so y'all can get on a conference call maybe tomorrow and give us some answers on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, very good.
Thanks, sir.
I just want to remind everybody, if everybody's not up to date on the weather that's forthcoming next week, we're going to have some temperatures in the teens, and we was talking up here earlier, the, some of the mornings, the, during the day's going to be the highs, it's going to be around freezing, so just remember all of your outside faucets and water hoses and things that may be, you know, hooked up, and also especially caring for your animals, and also livestock as well, as well as your pets. So just want everybody to be mindful of that, because it's been probably about this time last year since we've had any temperatures down this low. And I think, Mr. Blake Moore said earlier, because I haven't caught up on the weather, this is going to be about three days in a row, I think, it's going to be down into the teens, so everybody be mindful of that. Okay, very good. We have anything on executive sessions you have?
No, sir.
Okay, so we'll go to our next item. Our last item is to adjourn the meeting. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, he's, that's okay?